Aloha, forget everything I said about three minutes ago, we're gonna start this all over again. Happy New Year and happy new session. Hopefully, we get this right. It's Friday, the 28th of January, 3 o'clock, and we're in conference room 224 for a hearing for the Economic, Energy, Economic Development and Tourism Committee. I am joined by Mark Abel, Vice Chair, Senator Ms. Lucha, and we are here to discuss a number of economic development bills. But before we begin, I need to make a few housekeeping announcements that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event we have an abrupt ending to this hearing, which we've already experienced with our technical difficulties, we will convene to discuss any outstanding business. And we're gonna probably defer to Friday, maybe it is Friday, Monday at 3 o'clock again in 224. But hopefully, we have put our technical difficulties behind us. If we do unfortunately have any more, we would issue a public notice on the legislature's website. Participants participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. So with that, we are ready to get underway with our first ET hearing of the new year. Appropriately, we start with broadband infrastructure because we're so awesome in the state with broadband infrastructure as we've seen this afternoon. We've got to get better. So we're gonna start getting better with Senate Bill 2076 relating to broadband service infrastructure. First in our testifiers, this is Bert Lum.
Aloha Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Ms. Lucha and members of the committee. My name is Bert Lum, Broadband Strategy Officer for the Hawaii Broadband and Digital Equity Office, right here in DED. And I stand on my testimony in support of SB 2076. I also want to provide this kind of quick statement, and I promise to be brief. I want to thank you Senator Wakai for being a longtime supporter of broadband. You were there, you know, you were there when we started this journey back in 2018. And over the last four years have been there to support this broadband effort. I remember, you know, when we talked about carrier neutral cable landings and dark fiber and terrestrial backhaul. And of course, nobody knew what we're talking about. And of course, in March of 2020, during the Governor's Stay-at-Home order, we convened the first broadband HUI meeting. And you and Senate President were there always from the start. And then after the course of the last 96 weekly meetings of the broadband HUI, many of your colleagues joined us as well. And we're now up to about 400-plus strong. You know, the broadband HUI has accomplished a lot over the last 96 weeks, just to mention a few. You know, we published the Digital Equity Declaration, deployed Wi-Fi on wheels. We distributed computer hardware to those that did not have devices. We taught digital literacy classes to Kupuna. We secured CARES funding for the COVID release for homeless communities on Hawaii island. We built community networks, which started with Puho Nuo O Waimanalo, has grown to Puho Nuo Waina, Kipahulu, Milo Li'i. We implemented the Emergency Broadband Benefit, now transitioning to the Affordable Connectivity Program. And of course, we published the Digital Equity Ecosystem Map. And that's just a few of the things that I think, you know, the broadband HUI has accomplished. You know, our focus has always been community economic development. And, you know, we've done all this with volunteers to community stakeholders. Where funding was needed, we got support from philanthropic donors. You know, we live in an unprecedented time.
Sorry to interrupt, but your brief comments are turning not so brief. Do you want to wrap it up?
Oh, okay, I'll wrap it up. Okay, so Senator, you know me, you know, this is not a job, this is a mission. I respectfully request that you and your colleagues see fit to fund the Broadband and Digital Equity Office. And I thank you for allowing me to testify, and I'm available for any comments.
Sure, thank you. And Benet and I and our colleagues have gotten your request for staffing, so we probably will amend the bill to make you even more happy today. We go on to our next testifier, Trevor Oberusa from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Ms. Lucha. The Chamber of Commerce stands in support of SB 2076. As members of the broadband HUI, the Chamber of Commerce is a big believer in digital equity and broadband equity throughout the state. It's vital to get broadband and internet access to all parts of all islands, and especially in our most rural areas. If we expect to recover from the pandemic and build our economy and attract different industries and strengthen our industries that are already here, broadband access is key. So on behalf of that, the Chamber does stand in support of advancing broadband and advancing broadband equity in the state. And we stand with Bert as members of the HUI, and thanks so much for the time today. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Trevor. We also have Chris Miyake from Ocean Networks.
Aloha, Aloha Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Ms. Lucha, members of the committee. Thanks for all your efforts in promoting broadband and digital equity. Ocean Networks stands by its written testimony in support of this bill.
Thank you for joining us Cliff. Do we have Sandy Wong joining us? Oh, there's Sandy, hi Sandy.
Hi, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, this is Sandy Wong. I would echo the testimony of Ocean Networks in support and like Mr. Lum, but I'll be super brief just saying, good job Chair and Vice Chair on this, thank you.
Yeah, and Senator Revere too, woo-hoo!
Go ahead Senator Revere!
We've got the three musketeers here, paring ahead. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2076? If not, members, any questions of those who joined us? Nope, we all love broadband, and Bert, you have broad shoulders to carry us to a better place. Members, we're gonna move on to Senate Bill 2173. First testifier is Garrett Yoshimi from the University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Garrett Yoshimi, Vice Chairman for IT and CIO for the University of Hawaii System. And also speaking on behalf of our statewide broadband interests, where we stand in support of the bill and are happy to answer any questions that members of the committee may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us Mr. Yoshimi. Next, we have Dean Nishino from DCCA.
Good afternoon Chair Wakai, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Dean Nishino with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. I believe you have my written testimony offering comments on Senate Bill 2173. And I stand on that written testimony and available for questions if any. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for joining us Dean. Next, Jay Griffin from Public Utilities Commission.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. You have our written testimony offering comments available for any questions as well, thank you.
Thank you Jay. Christian Whitney from Hawaiian Tel, Hawaiian Electric, excuse me, Christian.
Christian is here, but he seems to be having technical difficulties.
Okay, we can get back to Christian later. We're gonna go to Felipe from Charter Communications.
Good afternoon Chair Wakai, Vice Chair, Ms. Lucha, members of the committee. Felipe Menorag with Charter Communications. We stand by our written testimony on SB 2173, and I'm available to answer any questions, thank you.
Thanks, good to see you Felipe. Janine Sukie from Hawaiian Telcom.
Aloha Chair and members of the committee, Janine Sukie speaking on behalf of... I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties. This is Janine Sukie with Hawaiian Telcom. We've offered comments to the committee and are available for questions, thank you.
Thank you for joining us Janine, congratulations on your new position at Hawaiian Telcom. Can we try to see if Christian Whitney from Hawaiian Electric is available? Yes, she is not there. Members, any questions for those who have joined us online? Yes, Senator Revere?
The gentleman from Charter, please.
Felipe?
Yes Senator.
Hi, thanks, could you restate your concerns then about this measure?
Sure.
Add to it in any way?
Broadly speaking, with the current legislation, the legislation as it currently stands, there are a number of issues around trying to get broadband out to, in particular rural and underserved areas, much less even into urban areas. And a bill such as this, at this point, could create a competitive disadvantage to telecommunications providers since we are so reliant upon the poles that are owned by HECO at this time. So our concern is that a bill like this could have the counterintended effect of not expanding broadband, but disincentivize the various providers throughout the islands from being able to extend their networks out into rural and unserved areas.
Do you see a way that this sort of initiative could be amended to make it more equitable from your perspective?
So it's a very good question Senator, and I would say that those discussions are discussions that we welcome and we would want to have with members of this committee and with the other interested stakeholders. That's a very complicated issue because there's so many components in order to be able to get to that final point. We'd be happy to participate in those discussions, but it's not something that would be done over the course of a meeting or two. There's a lot of components to trying to get to the end state that you're identifying.
Okay, thank you, thank you Chair.
No, fine.
I have a couple of questions for Jay Griffin from the PUC.
Sure Chair.
So Jay, in follow-up to Senator Revere's questions about just how we would put safety mechanisms to ensure that HECO plays fairly in this new area. And you bring up the issue of cross-subsidization, where you don't want somehow the electricity side to supplement the costs that might be incurred on the fiber side of what is now going to be a more diverse utility. But is the PUC the proper entity to kind of come up and regulate the fiber and broadband side of HECO? Or could we put it under the Cable Division within DCCA?
Well, I think I would have to defer to Director Awakuni on that, on the ability of that division. I mean, I think we have some role in this already, as the gentleman from Charter alluded to. There's already provisions for telecommunications carriers to lease spots on the Hawaiian Electric's poles. They have lease agreements, and so it's really a question of making sure that the terms are not cross-subsidized, as we pointed out and the consumer advocate pointed out. And there's fair access, broad fair access for the various players here. So that's not discouraged or throw a roadblock for the use of that infrastructure.
I'm just trying to see how, you know, because Hawaiian Electric Industries also has American Savings Bank as a part of their family. And ASB, from what I understand, is kind of overseen, regulated by DFI because of the financial nature of that business. So I'm just wondering if it's right to be putting this broadband component under you versus under the Cable Division within DCCA? Do you see?
Chair, we're more than willing to talk further with the committee here as well as Director Awakuni on how that, how we both look at how the different portions of those offices could provide oversight.
But do you think you have the technical expertise and understanding to go into regulating broadband?
I think we would have to add additional staff with more expertise in this area.
Got it, members, any further questions? I see that Christian Whitney from Hawaiian Electric is on. Christian, you want to join us and convey to us your thoughts on this measure? Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh my gosh, I have two phones and two computers and I finally got into your committee. I apologize for being late. Thank you for having me. Yes, I'm with Hawaiian Electric, and I just have a few thoughts I'd like to share with everyone, please.
Yes, please, go ahead.
As a company, we share with the state and the community our shared vision for a distributed energy future. That means we have an RPS goal of 100% renewable energy to meet by 2045 and 70% carbon reduction by 2030. To accomplish these lofty goals, we must modernize our electric grid. This requires unique, robust, and diverse telecommunications infrastructure to every asset we own at the edge of every single community out there, to urban, rural, unserved, underserved, and Hawaiian homeland communities. It is this foundational backbone, backhaul, or middle-mile infrastructure that we offer to lease to internet providers and other third parties in an effort to minimize duplication of effort, to reduce congestion in the right-of-way and bucling, and without increasing cost to the consumer. We are also focused on providing maximum value to our ratepayer. Therefore, we support maximizing our investments in telecommunications in order to address this growing need for equitable access to telework, telemedicine, remote learning, and participation in the digital economy. I wanted to point out that this bill is consistent with a national trend across the country demonstrated by legislation that has been adopted in Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi, Virginia, and Texas. It's also consistent with policies set by NARUC encouraging the expansion of electric utilities' role in broadband. I provided citations to that in my written testimony. We believe that this bill overlays our existing and future telecom needs with the state's needs to provide broadband to more users. Generally speaking, broadband consumers are electric ratepayers. And by allowing Hawaiian Electric to leverage its middle-mile infrastructure in conjunction with last-mile internet providers, we believe Hawaiian Electric is here to leverage its middle-mile infrastructure. And we think together that we could positively impact Hawaii's consumers who consume both of those services. We encourage any partnership that will allow our ongoing investments in grid modernization to bring additional benefits to the community by way of broadband equity. Thank you for allowing me to testify out of order and late, but I appreciate your time and I'm available for questions.
Thank you Christian, and I believe Senator Revere has questions.
Sure.
Hi, good afternoon. So the concern that we're hearing, at least as I understand it, is that you would have an unfair advantage in getting out to the rural areas because of your, you know, just the design of the system, we've got the electricity poles. What if you were to create and spin off a separate broadband provider, a separate company that competed equally with the other entities in this field? Would that, in other words, what would you suggest HECO might be able to do to alleviate that concern of unfair advantage?
Well, I would have to say I don't believe we have an unfair advantage. We do have a pole attachment program, and we do set poles for our own electric needs. But this opportunity to provide broadband, we're already providing this telecommunications for ourselves. We're just allowing others to lease it, we're not trying to compete. Although we do love competition in our state, and we recognize how many other internet and telco providers are out there today, we're not equipped today to compete in that space. We're simply just offering our infrastructure for others to lease so that they can get to the end user. I don't believe it's an unfair advantage.
So you wouldn't be providing the internet service?
Oh no.
You're just making your poles available is...
Yeah, and that's the concept of middle mile, we're like the highway. We provide the highway piece, but someone still has to take it all the way into that residential home or to a commercial building. We would not be doing that portion.
But you would be providing the broadband network across the pole?
We would be providing, excuse, sorry about that, sorry to overstep. But we would be providing the fiber itself. We would have no insight into the internet or the data being transported across that fiber. It's simply strands within our existing fiber that we would let someone else lease. They have to put equipment on both ends of that fiber and do something with it to make it available to an end user. And we will not be doing, that's not what this bill is about. This bill is just for us to lease the middle section.
I believe the Hawaiian Electric is able to, and I don't know exactly how to describe this, but everything Hawaiian Electric owns goes into the rate structures and pricing structures. So how would we, what sort of firewall would exist between Hawaiian Electric as far as the electric delivery and this cable providing? In other words, would that be folded into the kind of pricing advantages that Hawaiian Electric has?
So there's not really a firewall between us spending money on our own telecom network and us providing electricity. All of those things are wrapped up together and reviewed by our commission together. The difference here is if we have additional strands available to lease, the revenues we would collect from that lease would be contributed to the ratepayer. So the theory is if we could lease fiber and earn extra revenues, it would bring the cost down for our electric company to operate, which would bring the rates down to our customers.
Yes, so you see, it's that overlap, it's that inbreed, that's that. What makes it compelling from your point of view is the taking advantage of the infrastructure and the harmonization of all these things. That's what, from Hawaiian Electric's point of view, it sounds really great because, you know, we're making it efficient. But from the other competitors, it sounds like they're at a disadvantage then because they're not going to be passing on, you know, discounted electricity to things.
I mean, well, the opportunity here is to partner with those companies because they would be able to get to an end user at a hopefully cheaper price than building it out themselves. If they use our network to get to a point in time, like a substation for example, we're already providing the fiber to the substation.
But they're gonna have to rent, pardon, I'm sorry, pardon me, but so then they would have to rent the cable from Hawaiian Electric?
They would lease the cable from us, I think, at a cheaper price than them having to build it themselves. And so the end broadband user or the company providing broadband to the consumer would hopefully have less costs. And at the same time, the lease they pay us would drop down the price for ratepayers. So both of them would see a reduction by doing a partnership together. It's not a competition, we want them to come and lease from us so that their costs go down too.
In a perfect world, okay, okay, thank you, I've reached the end of my questions Chair.
This is, question is for Jay. So Jay?
Yes, Vice Chair.
Okay, so affordability is an issue for many of our rural communities because as you know, those communities, many of them are economically disadvantaged. So you could lay down the, you know, network and everything, but at the end of the day, they would not be able to afford it. But in your testimony, you talk about cost co-station and cross-subsidization. Could you explain that concept and would that have any impact on the affordability? And are you more concerned about the record-keeping or the actual impact on the fees?
I think, so Senator, thank you for the question. I may defer part of it to Dean Nishino as well, but I think this really touches on exactly what Senator Revere was asking about as well. There needs to be basically a kind of oversight police role here, both to make sure that there's open access to the infrastructure as Ms. Whitney was talking about, so there's not preferential treatment for one provider over another. And it's also an accounting exercise to make sure costs incurred for the electricity side are appropriately accounted for. I think the concern here in any of these situations of shared infrastructure is that there's more costs attributed to the regulated side. So this is shared infrastructure, but in an accounting perspective, you have to watch out, there's not too many costs attributed, raising the cost of electricity to provide the lower cost on the broadband side. So it's an accounting exercise there. And then I think the consumer advocate also brought up, to the extent there's other affiliates or subsidiaries of CGI potentially competing, that there's fair rules in place for treating those. So I think in the case that Ms. Whitney talked about, there is the opportunity here to leverage the investment in the electricity infrastructure and bring benefits to everyone. I think what we're trying to highlight is that there is a lot of careful policing and accounting work in particular to make sure that the costs are really borne by which part of the infrastructure, which user base is using it, if that makes sense.
Okay, so you're not really opposed to it, it's just that you're issuing a word of caution in the fact that there are some possible landmines that we need to navigate.
I think that's exactly correct, that we're definitely not opposed. We're saying, you know, that burden oversight role will have to fall on someone. Traditionally, it does fall on commissions and the consumer advocate's office. And it's not necessarily that easy as well, but that's to be balanced against the potential benefits it offers and efficient use of the infrastructure.
Ms. Whitney? So help me, yeah, help me understand because I'm trying to understand the technology. So if, for instance, we don't go with this route, the existing, the current potential practice may be what? Just doing another, how do you call that, laying out a different network system is what I'm assuming?
So there's a couple of things there. We feel we already have the ability and we have in the past leased fiber to other carriers. We can do that, we take that to the commission and request approval of that. And as Commissioner Griffin stated, you know, there's lots of things that they would look at for each individual project. And so part of this bill was to, or the reason why we felt this bill was important was to clarify and or codify our right to do that, not instead of, but just understanding that each time we partner with someone to do so, we would have to go to the commission, and it could, it could take a while to get through that process if a lot of people were interested in our fiber at the same time, and that could be a deterrent to getting it out there quicker. If for some reason someone came to us today and wanted to lease fiber, and maybe we didn't have it available to lease in the first place, maybe it was in an area we don't have fiber like you're suggesting, they would have to go to either build their own pole line to get to that neighborhood, or they would have to maybe use Hawaiian Telcom or the state or the county, they have poles as well. That's kind of the nuance you have to consider in each and every situation because what you're trying to get to may or may not have the infrastructure in place.
Okay, thank you Chair.
Oh, KRC, but KRC actually supported, provided supportive testimony in this.
I think they just had it written, I don't think they're in the...
Maybe KRC wants to do the same thing. So I have just a couple of questions for you Christian. Did I hear you correctly when you responded to Senator Revere? That it's your intention that the fibers that you might have as extra, the dark fiber that you have, you're gonna have another entity light that up, so you're not actually gonna be delivering the fiber or the broadband to businesses or residences? You're having somebody else just ride on the capacity that you have?
Correct, that's the concept of dark versus lit fiber. There are areas where the fiber we have installed is 60 strands, and in other areas, it's 144 strands. Some areas, it's only six because it was put in a long time ago. And as a company, we just don't use every strand, but when you purchase it like that, it comes in bundles, you don't really get to pick your size. So there are instances where we light our fiber and use it every day, but in that same cable or conduit are additional strands that have not been lit. So for the middle-mile purpose or the dark fiber purpose is to lease the dark strands to someone else, and they light them for their own use. They have to have the ability to have equipment on either end to transport the data back and forth down the highway to an end user, and we're just providing the highway.
Okay, so if I'm a third competitor, like say Comcast, right, and I want to enter this market, you're gonna allow me to light up your dark fiber, but that lease agreement is not gonna be any more expensive or less expensive than what Hawaiian Telcom and Charter could lease that same dark fiber for, is that correct?
It would be less expensive by nature because it's dark versus lit. We would not be providing, lit service comes with a whole bunch of additional... not be provide, lit service comes with a whole bunch of additional consumer service type offerings. Like when someone calls and says, I can't watch Netflix tonight, help me out. We, that is not something we would be able to do and are not going to do. So the dark is a lower price tag than a lit strand.
Got it. Okay, I still understand Hawaiian Telecom and Charter's concern that even if a third entity came in and lit your dark fiber, that might be at a price that's cheaper than what they have on your existing poles. So we'll try and figure that out.
Just one last thing, and I'm not sure whether you're able to answer, Christian. I know there's other technology that are being explored, like satellite. Can, is that even feasible for Hawaii?
I'm not going to be able to speak on the satellite, but I do know as a company, we have other types of comm out there. We use microwave, we have, we have our own LT network, we're getting ready to deploy, and we have spectrum on. So there's other avenues to get communication back and forth for our company. I'm not familiar with that, whatever you're talking about. I don't, I don't know that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Of course.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Hi, thanks. So I'm wondering if, if we don't pass this bill, what prevents Hawaiian Electric from making this, these dark wires available to other providers?
We would still be able to do so. I think I spoke on it just a minute ago. We would take any, each and every opportunity to the commission to request approval for that. We've done it in the past. We have a docket in front of the commission right now to lease fiber. So if the bill doesn't pass, we're still able to do the things we want to do to some degree. We just feel this bill provides a little more clarity and codifies our right to do so and might have efficiencies built in through the statute versus each and every time going to the commission with a new partner to try to lease something.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Just wanted to put on the record, we have comments from Sandy Ma from Common Cause. We have supportive testimony from Janet Mason from the League of Women Voters, as well as supportive testimony from David Bissin from the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative. We're going to now move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 2212. And we have our testifiers. This Stephen Levens from DCCA.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Levens, Executive Director of the Office of Consumer Protection. Thank you for allowing me to testify. I stand on written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levens. We have Christopher Leon from the Attorney General's Office.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Masalucha, and all members of the committee. The Department of the Attorney General has provided comments on this bill because we did want to bring to the committee's attention that this bill, regulating this type of activity may be subject to legal challenge. I refer to our written testimony in which we included cases from some other states, specifically the North Dakota case and the Mississippi case, where those states had passed, you know, this anti-collar ID spoofing legislation, very similar to this type of bill, and were ultimately challenged in federal court on commerce cause grounds and struck down. So, you know, we do want to advise that, you know, while this bill is well-intended and, you know, local causes are the scourge of the earth, but this, you know, this type of bill passed by a state legislature in particular, you know, would be subject to challenge.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Leon. Steven Golden, Steven Golden from Hawaiian Telecom.
Good afternoon, Chair Wakai and members of the committee. Steve Golden with Hawaiian Telecom. Well, you have our written testimony and we will stand on our written testimony and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Stephen. We have written testimony from Lynn Marisol, who has submitted testimony in support. Members, any questions for those who have joined us online? Okay, thanks, everyone. We're going to move on to the next bill, that is Senate Bill 2568. First on our testifiers list is Isaac Choi or someone from DOTAX.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. This is Isaac Choi from the Department of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony. I'd just like to make a short additional comment. You know, this particular bill prohibits a state employee from being compensated for services in the film industry. You may want to point, Chair, in this bill to the Ethics Chapter, in particular 84-3 and 84-13. 84-3 will define compensation and 13 is unjust enrichment. That could be a little bit more specific than what you had in your bill. That's all I got to say. I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director and Deputy Director of Tax. Next, we have Georgia Skinner from DBED.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We do stand on our written testimony with comments and just echo what the Department of Taxation is mentioning, that we do feel there should be a little bit more detail in the body of this proposed measure and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. We have written testimony from Vasilis Seramos from UH Commentary, Christine Achem from the Academy of Creative Media at UH Manoa Commentary, Maricia Elmore has submitted testimony, she's from SAG-AFTRA, in support. Richard Galindes from Island Film Group. Richard?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Appreciate the opportunity to testify. We are opposed to this bill for a number of reasons. We are the largest and one of the oldest local film and television production companies in Hawaii. This bill, unfortunately, I think, was a product of a very poorly-written and inaccurate article in Civil Beat. The ability for state employees to work in other fields is certainly governed by various ethics laws, as Director Choi pointed out. We rely on, in many cases, there are a number of very highly qualified film professionals that work at ACM that on their hiatuses and other breaks perform services as directors and directors of photography all over the world, including Hawaii. That's what makes them good teachers. And if they weren't actually doing what they taught, you question whether, you know, what they're teaching is very good. Finally, I'd like to point out that this is not an unusual situation where government officials appear in films and feature films. The mayor of San Francisco-London Breed has a role in the latest Matrix movie. So I think there are ethics rules that need to, you know, be applied. But in terms of disqualifying a production from their entire tax credit or disqualifying the payment that individual provides actual services, I think is misdirected at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Tom Yamachika?
Thank you, thank you, Chair and members. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted written testimony, basically agreeing with the thrust of Mr. Galindes's comments. We think that there's an ethics code already on the books with a state ethics commission that has the authority to investigate and punish any violations. It's unclear as to why we need this additional sanction for this particular industry and no other. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for joining us, Tom. Tuyana Scanlon from IATSE has submitted commentary. Sandy Wong?
I'm here, sorry. So this is Sandy Wong. I will stand on my comments echoing the concerns and opposition by Island Film. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for joining us, Sandy. And we have late testimony from Brenda Ching, who has submitted written testimony in support. Members, any questions of those who are joining us online? Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to our next bill, that is Senate Bill 2079. First on our testifiers list is Isaac Choi.
Thank you, Chair. Isaac Choi from DOTAX. We stand on our written testimonies with comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Isaac. Georgia Skinner from DBED.
Yes, Georgia Skinner, on behalf of our department and my currently our director, we stand on our comments and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Mrs. Seramos and Chris Lee, both from the University of Hawaii, has submitted testimony in support. Rick Galindes from Island Film Group.
Not to be confused by Senator, from Senator Chris Lee. Yes.
I'm happy to testify if you so.
Wait, everybody, today is Chris Lee's birthday. Happy birthday, Chris.
Yay, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Chris.
Oh, we're back to Rick Galindes.
That's me again.
Need to distract you.
I have to sing happy birthday. I guess I'm the one. Yes, we submitted comments on this bill. You know, we've gone around and around a lot on this idea of loan-out companies. And, you know, I think we support the idea of doing some sort of income tax withhold. You know, when we pay loan-out companies, which are corporations that have as their employees directors or actors or things of that nature, we run those through our payroll company. We pay the union fringe benefits on them. And so they are in the system, in the payroll system. So doing something where we withhold income tax, we think makes a lot of sense. The withholding of general excise tax, which is also part of this bill, you know, we strongly oppose that in that, you know, film and TV production, you know, is a lot like construction or more, maybe more appropriate, like a carnival. We bring a bunch of people together at one time, and there are different people that work in different roles and they work on a project. And when they're done, they move on to the next project. And it appears over time that more and more of what we feel is a pertinent taxation's obligation have been started to be put on production companies in terms of collecting general excise tax, making sure vendors have GE numbers. This is all information we provide to the state as part of our tax credit applications, is we provide complete list of vendors, complete list of addresses. Now required to provide a complete list of general excise tax numbers. We provide the names of the loan-outs. There are not that many that, you know, that it's not, it would not be a huge burden for tax to use those lists and go after those taxpayers that may not be filing their tax returns. But to put that on production and use that also as a leverage against the tax credit, just puts more and more work on productions when that's not our job. That's not our job is to collect taxes. But in terms of the income tax, if there's a way to do that, it's certainly something we could fold into the system with the payroll companies that we all use. So appreciate that. Getting back to the first thing, which doesn't seem to be talked about a lot, there was a proposal to eliminate the good faith defense in tax credit situations, which we can't really understand why that is. If somebody claims a tax credit in good faith, why the defense would be eliminated? And just to be clear, the definition of good faith includes innocent mistakes such as inadvertence or mathematical error. So there seems to be a real pressure to go after tax credit claimants and do away with this good faith defense, which is, just seems antithetical to most, you know, most ways of thinking. If you do something in good faith, you shouldn't have to pay a penalty for it. So anyway, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Rick. Next on our testifiers, this is Tom Yamachika from the Tax Foundation.
Thank you, Chair and members. Tom Yamachika from the Tax Foundation. Let me just comment on a couple of issues. One is the reasonable basis defense to the penalty for the erroneous credit claim. As presently drafted, this elimination of the reasonable basis defense applies to any claim for credit anywhere in the tax code, not just this industry. So it is very, very broad-based and has ramifications far beyond this industry. So we just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of that. Second, with regard to general excise tax withholding, we aren't opposed to the idea, but we certainly think it should be in the GE law where people can find it. I mean, right now, it's a GE withholding provision in the income tax code. So we would suggest that that be moved to 23744, which presently has a withholding provision applicable to the entertainment business. We also suggest that there be some, perhaps, harmonization of the withholding rate with the legislator's intent as to, you know, what the proper tax rate's supposed to be. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Bruce Copa from the Motion Picture Association of America.
Aloha, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Masalucha, members of the committee, and happy birthday, Senator Lee. Again, Bruce Copa here representing the Motion Picture today. We have submitted our written testimony. Again, we're very much in support of the bill and more importantly, thank you for your support of an industry that continues to do well here in Hawaii, especially during the pandemic. We've actually, hopefully, we feel like we've done a lot to contribute to the economic development. With that, I stand again in support and here to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Tuyana Scanlon from IATSE has submitted testimony in support. Sandy Wong?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Sandy Wong here. Again, I would echo the testimony of Island Film and stand on my written testimony. So thank you and happy birthday, Senator Lee. Sorry.
Just made this here 10 minutes longer. Just joking. Congratulations. Oh, I think we have, I'm sorry, I said Brenda Ching has submitted testimony in support. Members, any questions of those who joined us online?
I have a question.
Of course.
And I'm not sure whether this is for DBED or the Tax Office. And just, have you guys done a pro forma on the financial impact if you take into account the present films or I guess the regular TV shows that are being filmed here?
Yeah, I mean, currently, we're, we've experienced, I think, one of the highest years in production ever, and that is $423 million for 2021. That's an estimated number, estimated economic impact, which is not a cost-benefit analysis. I must say that on behalf of our state economist. He will get that report out and get it to the legislature soon. But right now, over 800 million in terms of economic impact. The industry, as you may or may not know, does generate the taxes through payroll and other aspects of the local hires as well as small businesses while they're in production. And it isn't until the review of their Hawaii production report and the certification and their filing with the Tax Office that they actually get the credit. So they are churning the economy. That's the important part to know. If you need further, in terms of pro forma, we do provide a spreadsheet that gives you the updates, but we prefer to refer to the cost-benefit analysis, which has granular detail on each of the different sectors of our economy that have different multipliers for the impact.
I guess I'm, okay, and thank you very much for the, I'm actually seeking information on the 20% infrastructure tax credit. Past this measure, what would be the financial impact to the state?
I will defer to our Department of Taxation for that equation. But we wholeheartedly support a infrastructure credit.
Thank you. Is the Tax Office available or is that the information not?
Tax credit goes next.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I probably jumped ahead there.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes. So do you want to hold on?
Yes, I will hold on.
Isaac, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
About the part about the G E T withholding. You, I believe, want to withhold at the 4.5% rate. Of course, the industry wants it at the manufacturing rate at 0.5%. What's the difference in take for the state of?
2.5%. 3.5%.
I'm sorry?
The difference is 3.5%.
Oh, but is there a dollar amount that you could kind of just, over the magnitude of this difference?
No, Chair, I'm sorry, I don't have that, that, that figure with me, what the magnitude of the dollar amount is.
Yeah, because if we're talking a couple thousand dollars, all right, I mean, that'll kind of weigh on our decision on which rate we go with, but it seems like a substantial difference between 4.5 and 0.5%. So maybe if this bill moves forward, you can tell what that difference in take is going to be.
And, and Chair, as we mentioned, we would prefer you not mention a manufacturer's rate because I don't want anybody to make a mistake that thinking that they're going to be paying a manufacturer's rate. The current law is to pay the full 4%. So if you could take that word out, that'll be cool and just put whatever number you want to put in there.
Cool to you, but I think the industry thinks it's really cool to be taxed at the manufacturing rate. So I hear what you're saying, but I'm trying to balance it out with what the industry thinks is fair as well. Members, any further questions? Thank you, Isaac, and thank you for everyone who's online. We're going to move on to Benet's favorite bill.
Yes.
Senate Bill 2067.
Getting ahead of myself.
This is the Film Infrastructure Tax Credit Bill, and we have on our testifiers list Craig Keirai has submitted commentary. He's from Budget and Finance. And again, back for an encore performance, Isaac Choi.
Yes, Chair, this is a very, very interesting tax shelter bill. We do have a very, very strong reservations. You know, anytime you, you, you structure a tax shelter bill, you have to be very, very careful. What is really disturbing is when you limit the powers of Dole Tax to audit any type of tax preference, I believe all those provisions should be taken out of the bill. You know, as you know, and you've experienced and I've experienced, and of course, Chris Lee has experienced, that we have learned our lessons from giving away tax shelters. And, and to limit the tax department from being able to investigate audit and making sure that the state's revenues are protected is paramount. And I don't think Dole Tax should be restricted in any way for auditing any type of tax preference. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the commentary. Georgia Skinner from DBED.
Yes, thank you. We support the intent of the bill, Chair, and members of the committee. As said previously, happy to provide any other data that you might need. We would defer again to the Grand Chair of the Department of Taxation, Mr. Isaac Choi, in his statement, because really they are the people that know best. I will say that we need to incentivize any kind of development for a new infrastructure. And we applaud that there are bills moving forward to extend the sunset date of the tax credit. That will inherently help any kind of construction for a new facility, which we desperately need and we're running out of warehouse space now. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. This is Ceremos and Christopher Lee, the one that's not having a birthday today. Both from the University of Hawaii have submitted testimony in support. Mauricio Palma Delmore from Psych After also in support. Rick Galindis from Island Film Group.
Yep, there I am again. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. A couple, a couple of comments on, on this bill. First of all, you know, contrary to, to Director Choi's comments about not being able to, you know, to audit. That's not what the bill really says. The, the tax credit could be audited against the, the company that claims the tax credit. Now, this is a tax credit for infrastructure, which is, which according to the bill is an approved project by DBED. And infrastructure by its very nature is a tangible asset. So the, the audit would be against whether that company actually made that, that investment. And, and I'm sure in the rules that would be developed, there would be a review of the project and things of that nature. What the, what the, what the prohibition or the limitation on audit is meant to do is similar to other tax credits in other states, whereas this credit is a, is a transferable credit. And so if, if, if Senator Wakai builds a soundstage and, and generates this credit that he can't use and chooses to sell it to me, then what it's saying is the tax department can't audit me if I use the credit because I bought the credit from Senator Wakai. And, and I shouldn't be held liable if Senator Wakai did something that was incorrect. So that's, that's what this is about. Not that you can't audit the credit, you can audit the credit, but you just can't go after the person that, that, that was sold the tax credit. Because then, then what's going to happen is the same problem that we have in general with transferable credits. Every time you have a transferable credit, there is a discount paid by the person buying the credit. If Senator Wakai wants to sell me tax credit for, it's worth a million dollars, I'm not going to pay him a million dollars for it. I would just pay my taxes. So I'm going to pay 800,000 or 850,000 for that credit. Now, the problem there is that if I could be audited, I'm going to pay a lot less for that credit. So, so now the benefit to the infrastructure project is very low. That's also the problem with transferable credits in general. If, if the state does a refundable credit, then the project is going to get that dollar. And, and the state's only going to pay that dollar, but the project is going to get the full dollar of the value of the credit. If, if the project has to sell the credit, it's going to get 80 cents or 85 cents. The state's still going to pay a dollar. But the value to the infrastructure project is less, and the lower the credit, the less of an incentive it is. So, so we would recommend that there not be transferable credits, that refundable credits are the way to go because they, they provide the direct one-to-one value to, to anybody. Now, in prior sessions, we have talked about an infrastructure credit and said, you know, we pay 20 or 25% incentive for people to bring productions here. This credit could be folded into the current tax credit language because it can still be a 20 or 25% credit for qualified infrastructure projects, which of course needs to be defined, has been brought up and, and, and reviewed. But those are all things that could be handled in the rules. We desperately need more infrastructure. We, we operate one of the only private film studios in the state. And right now we're looking at issues like the LED walls that other productions want to film against. Those cost about a million dollars, give or take. So for us to, to go down that road and spend a million dollars on infrastructure, we'd love to do it. Productions would love to have it. If we were able to have a, a tax incentive to help soften the, the cost of that infrastructure so that we had an LED wall, that'd be wonderful. So one of our comments though is to reduce, if we're going to move forward this bill, to have it be a refundable credit. I think it could be made part of, we think it could be made part of the regular tax credit. And then also to lower the, the minimum expenditure because we don't all need to build new buildings, which a minimum expenditure of 3 million would, would contemplate building a new building. There, there are a number of buildings that could be retrofitted or have infrastructure provided that would cost less than 3 million dollars. But they would still, you know, I think benefit from, from the incentive. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation.
Thank you, Chair and members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Our, our main comment is that we have some concerns about the tax system being used for this type of thing in the first place. We think that it adds a level of complexity that we now don't have in our tax system, you know, to, to deal with the prospect of credits being bought and sold and the consequent, you know, discounts that are applied or not. We, we think that the, and then we think that a problem with using the tax credit approach is, A, we don't know how much it's going to cost, and B, we don't know what we're getting. To solve most of those problems, we would recommend something, you know, very simple, like an appropriation for a direct purchase or a subsidy program up to a certain cap. I think either would give you the same, you know, the same review and the same results, and it would have the advantage of, of, of saying, yes, we know what we're, we want to buy and we know what the price is that we're paying for. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. And we have Irish Barber from IOTC has submitted written testimony in support. Sandy Wong.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Again, I would echo the testimony of Island Film. And I am available for questions and I'll stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Members, any questions of those who have joined us?
Can I finally ask my question?
This is your moment, Benet. Ask away.
Okay, so Department of Tax, Taxation, so, or, or Georgia or DBED. I wanted to find out if you had done the pro forma, if, for instance, if we pass this measure, do we have any idea based on past, maybe the past couple of years, how much infrastructure investments have been made by the weekly shows or the films? So that we have at least a modicum of understanding what the potential number of, for the credit would be?
I'll defer to DBED.
Thank you, Director Choi, and happy birthday to you, whatever that is. Okay. A couple of things. First of all, as Rick had mentioned, he has a facility that is in the private sector. And, you know, I'm sure that many productions here might use it. I know he has a lot of other opportunities for local production to benefit from certainly local vendors like HMI and others. The film studios that we currently have, let's just be clear, Senator, they're not building things right now because they, we are renting them space at Hawaii Film Studio and our Kalailoa Stages. Others are using warehouses or temporary facilities that are on city and county lands. We have tried to use the convention center. Also, the exhibit halls is an opportunity to have additional stage space. So we can't tell you that there was a pro forma done as part of the study in 2016 that DBED managed regarding what is the current industry trend, what are the current industry trends at that time? What type of facility should be built? I think the estimated number in 2016 was 60 million. So if you want to use that number, and I'm happy to transmit to the committee that simplified version, if you want the full version, I can send that as well. But it's a simple PowerPoint. Again, remember, this is rear view mirror. As Rick mentioned, yeah, as Rick mentioned, we, we do need to upgrade to new type of technologies. And it is extremely expensive. So I did like the idea of Mr. Yamachika as well.
Okay.
Sure.
It's actually going, thank you, thank you, DBED, for, let's see. Munichika.
Tom.
Tax Foundation.
Tom Yamachika.
Yes.
So this seems like, is this like a unique, from your estimation and from your experience, unique in the sense that will there be unintended consequences if we pass this measure for other industries?
Well, the, the, the measure that you have now seems to be limited to, you know, the film industry. So I'm not really worried about spilling over to other industries. I, I am worried about overuse of the tax credit concept in general. Because it, it does, to me, promote irresponsible spending because you don't know how, what you're, you're, you're getting and you, and you don't know how much you're paying for it.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. That's a wrap for the film bills. We're going to move on to tourism bills. And first one is Senate Bill 2075, testifying on behalf of HTA is John DeFreeze.
Aloha Chair Wakai, Vice Chairman Masalucha, members of the committee. Ilia Johnson here on behalf of John DeFreeze for the Hawaii Tourism Authority. He senses aloha to you and apologizes he's in transit at this time. We submitted written testimony on Senate Bill 2075, supporting the measure with one suggestion, and I'll be standing by if you have any questions. Mahalo Nui.
Okay, thank you, Ilia. Members, he's the only one who has submitted testimony and is online. Any questions for Ilia?
Chair.
Oh, yes, hi, Isaac.
Department of Taxation has submitted testimony. We'll stand by our comments.
Oh, sorry, I don't have the written testimony comments. Are you in support?
Just, just comments, and the, the most important one is make sure the effective date is January 1st, 2023.
Oh, okay, thank you for that huge suggestion. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ilia. We're going to move on to the next bill, which is Senate Bill 2358. And back for encore performance is Isaac Choi.
So, sorry, Chair, what, what bill was that?
2358, the T A T on mobile accommodations.
I, I'm sorry, my, my last comments, my last comments was for the wrong bill. We'll stand on our written, we'll stand on our written testimony on this one, Chair, my fault, sorry.
Oh, no problem. Let's start, get back to this. John DeFreeze or Ilia on behalf of HTA has submitted. Ilia, do you want to make comment on this bill?
Sure, mahalo for the opportunity, Chair. We submitted our written comments. We've reached out to the counties to understand the particular issues that they're facing and if they have any plans to look at regulation of camper vans. Overall, through our Destination Management Action Plan process and our consultation with community, there's a big concern about non-traditional accommodations. A lot of the discussion has been around illegal short-term vacation rentals. However, camper vans could be considered a non-traditional accommodation. And so those are our only comments on that. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ilia. We have Tony Davis from the Attractions Association.
Aloha Chair Wakai, members of the committee. Thank you. I stand on my testimony and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Tony. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation.
Thank you, Chair and members. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. Our comments were very brief. We, we just wonder why this particular alternative accommodation and, and we're wondering what is the next logical step? Like, what are we going to hit cruise ship passengers next? It, it is kind of a very different direction from where the, you know, where the transient accommodations tax started from. Happy, are there any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Mufi Hademan from the Hotel Launching Association has submitted testimony in opposition. And Barbara Kau Moana has submitted testimony in support. Members, any questions for those who've joined us online?
Just one, Chair.
Oh, yes, Senator Lee.
Oh, just to, just to, I think, Mr. Yamachika's point, if you're still there.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for your comments on that. You know, obviously, the, the nature of the industry has been changing pretty rapidly and even down in our beach parks and, and in the area on the Windward side, we've got a proliferation of, I guess, what you would call temporary camper van type situations. And most of my friends who are traveling also tend to rent those even in the mainland. You go from national park to national park and so forth. I'm actually doing that hopefully, you know, later on this year, assuming COVID gets better. But anyway, if the industry is changing significantly, shouldn't the tax base also be flexible to try and capture that intent?
If, if you're talking about rented camper vans, I, I don't, I don't see why not. The enforcement mechanism would be quite different, I think, from traditional, you know, hotel rooms or other kinds of alternate, I mean, other kinds of transient accommodations.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 2805. Just wanted to remind everyone, we have 20 minutes to get through four bills. So we, if you've submitted testimony, written testimony, we'd be happy if you could just stand on it. With that said, Dennis Ling from DBED.
Aloha Chair Wakai, Vice Chairman Masalucha, members of the committee, Dennis Ling with DBED. DBED stands in its written testimony in support and offers two comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Len Higashi from HTDC.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee. Len Higashi with Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Thank you, Len. Gwen Yamamoto Law from Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority has submitted testimony and support. Craig Kiroda from Department of Budget and Finance has submitted commentary. Uh, Trevor Aubruzza, Aubuzua, I'll get it right one day, Trevor, from the Chamber of Commerce has submitted testimony and support. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Chair and members. And the second time you said it was actually right, so thank you for that, uh, Chair. But uh, the Chamber of Commerce does support twenty eight oh five, and we stand on our testimony and happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Sure, thank you for joining us. Uh, Lauren Zerbo from the Food Industry Association.
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm Alexis Chapman for HFA, and happy birthday, Senator Lee. Um, we stand on our testimony and support and are here for any questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Alexis. Uh, Stephanie Sakamoto from HCUL has submitted testimony in support. Members, any questions for those who've joined us? Nope. Okay, thank you for joining us, all of you there for twenty eight oh five. We're going to move on to twenty eight oh six. Person on testifiers list is Len Higashi from HTDC.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, we stand on our testimony in support, available for questions.
Great, thank you, Len. We have written testimony from Craig Kiroda from Budget and Finance with commentary. Vasilis Sarimos from UH in support. Joel Simon Petri from the her own company has submitted testimony and support. Trevor Aubarzua, Aubarzua from the Chamber.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the committee. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce does support Senate Bill twenty eight oh six. Uh, just a way of background, during the interim, the Chamber did do uh small business roundtables and policy committees around entrepreneurship, manufacturing, economy, uh environment and education. And and these these next three bills were brought up among our small businesses that would help um get funding and also help them uh spur the economy. So um with those, these are coming directly from businesses, and these bills are coming from directly from small businesses, and we think that it would help support, especially after COVID and getting businesses back on their feet. So we highly support these bills, and and we thank you uh for introducing them here in committee and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Trevor. Um, Lauren Zerbo or Alexis from the Food Industry Association.
Uh, thank you. We stand on our testimony and support.
Okay, and members, we have all supportive testimony from Adrian Hong, Forrest Frizzle, Doug Nelson, Steve Brennan, Ryan Ozawa, Sandeep Pat Patel, Nicole Fisher, Brian Watanabe, Herman Kugler, Tom Leonard, Isar Mostam, Fenshot, Blair Schultz, Kelsey Almost, um, Patrick Sullivan has submitted testimony, uh commentary. Leonard, or Ron Rawbacher in support, Pamela Tompap in support, Turks Sultan in support, Omar Sultan in support, and Devin Kealoha in support. Senator Misut, do you have any questions for anybody here? Okay, thank you for joining us on that measure. We're going on to the next bill, which is Senate Bill twenty eight zero seven. Person on testifiers list is Len Higashi.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I I should have said, uh, at the last one, thank you uh to Chair Wakai and Vice Chair and the members of the committee for hearing the set of bills. We really appreciate it. Um, HDC stands on our testimony in support and available to answer any questions. Aloha.
You're welcome. Um, we have Trevor Aubrazula from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Chair and members of the committee. Uh, Chamber of Commerce does support Senate Bill twenty eight oh seven, and we stand on our testimony, our written testimony, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Um, and we have a bunch of letters in support. Um, I should actually put everybody's name on the record. These are all in support. Uh, Vasilis Sarimos, UH, Joel Simon Petri, Gary Yoshioka, Peter Cam, James Chan, Lauren Zerbo, Adrian Hong, oh, Lawrence, uh, Alexis, do you want to speak on this measure?
No, we stand in support on the next two as well.
Great, thank you, Alexis. Adrian Hong, Carrie Louie, Forrest Frizzle, Georgine Per- Pervinus, Summer Shige, Ryan Ozawa, Sandeep, Sandeep, Patel, Brian Watanabe, Herman Kluger, Tom Leonard, Blair Schultz, Kelsey Almost, Emos, Crystal Appelis, Ron Wydenbacher, Pamela Tompap, Terrick and Omar Sultan, and Robbie Melton. All of those main individuals are in support. Uh, any questions, members of those who are online? Okay, we're going to move on to our last bill, which is twenty eight oh eight. Um, and on our testifiers list, we have Gwen Yamamoto Law, who has submitted written testimony and support, and we have Len Higashi.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, HDC stands on our written testimony in support. Um, also just want to emphasize, this is a federally funded program, part of the American Rescue Plan Act. That HDC is the lead agency helping to provide access to small capital to uh businesses here in Hawaii. And and the state support is something that would be uh very much appreciated. Aloha. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Len. Craig Kiroda from Budget and Finance has submitted comments. Trevor Aubrazula from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Chair and members of the committee. I'm going to piggyback on what Len said. We would really support state assistance in this program and speaking with some of our smallest businesses, this has been a big help in them getting capital, especially in tough times after COVID. So thank you for hearing this bill, and the Chamber does support SB twenty eight oh eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Uh, Lauren Zerbo or Alexis from the Food Industry Association.
I'll be stand on our testimony and support again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. And Pamela Pamela Tompap from the Maui Chamber has submitted testimony in support. Members, any questions of those who are joining us for this last bill? Okay, uh, we are going to take a brief recess before taking the vote. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're back. We convening our Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism three o'clock agenda for decision making. First on our agenda is Senate Bill two zero seven six regarding broadband infrastructure. We all love this bill. Want to see us grow our broadband footprint in the state. Um, but realize it's hard to do with one person, so we're going to assist Bert Lum and give him five positions and allow him to contract out for some services and put in a dollar figure cost of eight hundred and sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars to to carry out of the broad mission in front of him. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
This is for SB two zero seven six for Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go on to Senate Bill twenty one seventy three relating to broadband infrastructure service. This is the bill that allows HECO to start dipping its toes into the broadband arena. Um, I like competition, but I like competition that's fair, so we're going to make a couple of recommendations and amendments. First is that we're going to take DCCAs, two recommendations, one which which was to clarify the language that provides for streamlined application process. Um, and two, the electricity utility companies should be required to fire applications that have a minimum amount of information to facilitate a streamlined and efficient review process. And as outlined already in the bill, they will be regulated by the PUC, and we have confidence in Jay and his folks there to come up with the proper rules to make sure that that's an even playing field, plus technical amendments. That's the recommendation. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
For SB two one seven three, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Thank you. On Senate Bill twenty two twelve regarding robo calls, I'm going to pass this measure with amendments. We're going to take Hawaiian Telecom's recommendation of providing exemptions that uh they, there is an exemption for those who are voice providers that comply with the TRICE Act, and we're going to also have technical amendments added to this measure. Any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
As regards to SB two two one two, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
No.
Chair, your uh recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. On Senate Bill twenty five sixty eight regarding motion picture, digital media and film production, I'm going to recommend passage of this measure with amendments taken into account do taxes recommendation of compensation and to say that it's monetary compensation and also take IOTC's clarifying language recommendations. Any discussion on those two amendments? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
For SB two five six eight, the recommendation of the chair is pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Misses Vicious.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, the next measure is Senate Bill two zero seven nine relating to taxes. Uh, it's a very complicated bill. Uh, so we're going to take a number, make a number of recommended amendments. Take into account and take all the recommendations offered by Do Tax, and there are five of them, uh, actually four of them. Um, withholding tax on loan out companies, um, we're going to take their recommendation with regard to G E T withholding of four point five percent. We're also going to move, uh, and I wrongfully put this withholding in the income tax code. We're going to move it to the proper section of law, which is the G E T section. I'm going to add clarifying language for Do Tax to impose fees to go into their tax administration special fund to pay for the auditing personnel they're going to need for this uh but tax credit. And then we're going to take Island Film Group's suggestion to delete the good faith defense in section two, as well as make technical amendments. Those are the recommendations. Members, any discussion?
Is not to div, to, is not to eliminate good faith, but to uh preserve the good faith.
Yes, so.
Defense. I just want to be clear.
We're going to preserve the good faith defense and take out what uh Do Tax had suggested in penalizing people for making honest mistakes.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, so no further discussion. I'm Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
This is for SB two.
Sorry, huh? Yeah, so we just talked about the good faith effort condition. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Yeah. For SB two zero seven nine, the Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. We're going to go on to Senator, Ms. Lucia's favorite bill on this agenda, Senate Bill two one six seven. This is a film infrastructure tax credit. We're going to take into, um, we're going to take the recommendations by Do Tax as well as D-Bed's recommendation for getting some staffing to administer this tax credit. And we're going to take the, um, make technical non-substantive amendments. Any comments? Discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
This is regarding SB two one six seven. The Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your mo, uh, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, on to Senate Bill two zero seven five relating to the Hawaii Tourism Authority. This gives them an opportunity to do performance-based contracting, recommendations to pass this measure as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
For SB two zero seven five, the Chair recommends passing this without amendments as is. Chair uh votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, uh, Senate Bill twenty three fifty eight, this is a taxing mobile accommodations. It uh was a committee's decision that we are going to defer action on this measure. So we're going to move on to Senate Bill two eight zero five relating to small business loans. The recommendation is to take D-Bed's recommendations, which is to add community development financial institutions to the list of financial uh institutions that can avail themselves to this. Change from ten thousand to twenty thousand to allow for more flexibility to assist startup companies. Make it a revolving fund. Right now it's a special fund, but we're going to make it a revolving fund. Include deposit of payments back into the fund and make the effective date July first, twenty twenty two. Uh, any discussion on those recommendations? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
SB two eight zero five, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. On the next measure, Senate Bill twenty eight zero six relating to the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. This is the SBIR loan program, which puts money into this really positive uh uh government gift for start, uh, not startups, but for tech companies. So recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
For SB two eight zero six, Chair recommends passing this as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. We're on to Senate Bill twenty eight zero seven relating to the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. This is their manufacturing assistance program. A program that uh has yielded very positive benefits for economy, so the recommendation is to uh pass this measure as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
SB two eight zero seven will be passed as is. Vote, uh, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Fantastic. And our last bill is twenty, Senate Bill twenty eight zero eight relating to the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. This is to really help utilize ARPO and not necessarily ARPO, but federal funds uh to help small businesses get a credit for growth opportunities. So the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucia, I vote yes.
Last but not least, SB two eight zero eight, Chair recommends passing it as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Fantastic. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We are adjourned.